Oh, I forgot to change the chat information. Oh my goodness, um we're not co-working, we are software and game development. NYC subway app. Coding session. Five PM to seven PM. Weeknights, yeah it seems like I'm drifting into a schedule. Seems like five to seven is a good time for me, so it keeps, keeps happening. And let's ping the Discord. Yeah, I like doing stuff live. Uh you just kinda do it and then it's done. Okay, so I have a, the first problem that I wanna work on today is the map checker. It is failing right now because the weekend map is not linked from... Is that true? I mean that's the error I'm getting. Let's see, maps. Yeah, there's no weekend map, uh published, so my map checker is failing to find a weekend map. So, uh let's see if we can fix that. I think that means that these, this one has to be optional. How come, uh oh command click is right here? Oh, I see. So I guess I wanna refactor this to... Wow, thanks AI. Um, map info error? Oh, I see. Oh wait, so I am getting, I am getting these things as errors. And then, and then what happens? Wait, I already, I already built this all out. How do I, um... Oh, I guess I could just run it, uh locally and that will give some insight onto what's happening. Oh, I need to turn the music down. Hello, hello? Okay, cool. Uh, download maps command. Yeah, so where do I, where am I writing these errors out? I just wanna kinda visually see that the other ones aren't breaking. Well, I guess what I really wanna do is is just like emit success for everything. And then... Yeah, I think that's what I wanna do. What's... Cause right now I just, I really want confirmation that it's running. I trust that it's running, but actually, well I don't. I don't trust that it's, it's getting everything. See what happens when I do, when I do that. When I just don't filter anything out. Uh, I don't get a whole lot of anything, do I? Does this blow up, this look like, this seems like this blows up everything. Fetch maps. What do we get? Yeah, we only get the one, not the second one. Okay, so everything is blowing up here. Okay, so I'm glad I'm taking a look at this. I don't want, I don't wanna blow everything up, um... I want to say success or you know, failure. Which, we have a type for that already, it's called result. There we go. Oh, not self, switch the map info that got passed in. I mean, we really just went to... Yeah, we don't, we don't, we're just mapping. We don't need to do all that. Uh... I guess, I guess it kinda ends up looking the same, huh? Is incompatible with contextual type. Really? Is that true? No, that's not true. Oh, I see over here. Yeah, cause some can fail, so that's, that's the difference now. So this is not gonna compile, I think. So this is, uh... Map info results. This is basically the same as before. Try await and then we gotta make a message. I guess we need to pass the, uh... A little bit more than just the, the error. We also wanna know which map it is that failed. Message dot send. Is this, is this really how I wanna do it? I'm expecting, I'm expecting the weekend map to not be there during the week. I don't wanna spam myself with that. I think I, I think I need a reset. I think I wanna wipe the, wipe the slate clean. No, this is, this ha- this is how I wanna go. I do wanna have a bunch of results. I guess I just, I want... Yeah, this needs to be a little more interesting. Or... Or I can have my own little error message when it, when it doesn't exist. Well, I guess this here simplifies. I guess I wanna s- I wanna say that like I checked and nothing was needed to be uploaded. This is like, this is a big, uh... I guess this is kind of a bigger change, huh? Let me take a step back. Yeah, I think... Let me reset everything. So do you have this worth keeping? No, this was, this was all just trying to figure out what I'm doing. So I guess I'm trying to do two things at the same time. One is post to Discord every time the map checker runs and say if it was successful or not. And two, if there's no weekend map, cause it's not the weekend, that's not an error. Do that for the logger. Oh, we can't test that because it's erroring right now. Ah, I see, that's how, that's where I got lost. And that is, yeah, this is where cra- we're throwing right here. If resource dot map ID equals dot weekend. So if it is the weekend, don't throw. If it's not the weekend, throw. Oh. I can't just return right here. Will that do it? Looks like that did it. Okay, let's make it look pretty. Downloaded nothing, perfect. And then let's try map checker. Download maps, post to Discord. Where is Discord? Here it is. It works. Okay. See, I'm glad I reverted all that stuff I did because I was getting way too complicated. And this is, this is a much simpler solution. So if it's, if it's the weekend map, like don't, don't panic if there's no URL, okay? And then just filter it out, okay? That's great. And then when we, oh, there's not even a change here. And then, uh... On the Discord, when we're posting to Discord, just say we, we didn't get anything, if there's nothing to update. Checked maps and nothing to download. So if there's... If there's a different error, it'll still blow up. Um, which I guess is not what we want, really? We want the successful ones to still succeed. Uh, don't blow up if the weekend map is missing on which happens on weekdays. Okay, that's great, um... Yeah, and then I guess kind of discovering that... If one of them blows up, the whole thing blows up. Which is, which is not great. But it's working better now and that's, that's the important part. This is not the main thing I wanna work on today. I just need to get into a little bit of a better state. Cause as I mentioned last week, uh and as I guess it's kind of implied here, is that I wanna put the weekend maps in the app. And that will take some effort. So let's swap over to the iOS app. Oh, this is actually the wrong spot. The map editor is what we're interested in. And I guess I should have the build open so I can, we can deploy that when it's done. It's running. Select the map, weekend. Okay, we did, did Van Quillen Park last time. Okay, so half hour in, my fastest rate I think was a hundred and fifty stops per hour and... Oh, there's less than that. That's way off. Let's zoom in. Oh, what happened to my camera? Just fell off. Why would it do that in the middle of me using it? Uh, well, let's not get too distracted by that, I guess. Oh, I guess the A here should be the zero. And now Do Not Disturb is falling off. Doesn't it know I'm streaming? It's still on over here. Huh. Scoot that up a little bit. I wonder what kind of internal tools the MTA has. They better have something. This better not just be a Adobe Illustrator file or something. Thank you autocomplete. That's not what I'm trying to say. So a whole bunch of people was like, when is this map coming out? When is the subway diagram coming out? It came out last week and one person said, hey, it's out. They didn't say it looks good or it looks bad, just it's out. I think no news is good news. This is the coolest thing I can be doing right now. Just getting ready for this coming weekend's subway map. Oh, right. This is the, uh, this is two different stops. This has to be, this is also a zero. Because my numbering is based on the classic map. They just completely take out the the whole beeline on the weekend. I mean, it doesn't run, but I guess it's like it's a completely different graphic. As we saw when working on this, uh, last week, the, uh, the sizes of the two maps are way different. This is a much smaller map. Uh, pixel wise. Still make that the zero. Zero is where the, uh, the popover is pointing at, uh, in the app. Oh, you can't see my hands gesturing because my camera is broken right now. And I'm not going to fix it in the middle of massive progress. Oh, I guess I can make this window smaller. That'll make, uh, the text on the screen easier to see. I'm not tired, but this is making me sleepy. That's not true. I was getting sleepy, uh. Oh, we're working on the map editor. I mean, on the map checker. Uh, I guess that's the four. Which makes this the five. The six. The seven. And the eight. Now typically the MTA doesn't move the dots around too much on their maps. And that's what I guess I'm hoping happens for the weekend maps. That I can basically just confirm that everything is still in the right spot and then post it so that everyone has it in time for the weekend right away. Uh, but I guess I don't know that for sure. Part suspended, use AC. Yeah, these black, uh, little badges seem helpful. That's a cool riff. Oh, did I type the wrong number there? I did. Slow and steady wins the race and it's I've typically had a, uh, tough time with that. So just doing like a few of these and then keeping going, like it's really, I'm really reaping the benefits of believing that. Because Cause how many are there? There are like seven hundred eighty-six circles on the standard. Subway diagram. And that took eight hours start to finish. Uh but it's spread out over a couple of different days. Just did a little bit each time. Well, a lot each time. Um I was going going pretty fast there. And next thing, next thing you know, the map is done. And now we're on to other features. Whenever I should have like a a way to mark things as as done in here. To make it easier to to find the next stop without having to type it in. Okay, that was the one train. Let's do the two train. Also, I guess zero is the most common one to put here. I feel like I should have a a button to put zero in here. Maybe we'll do that real quick actually. Save some carpal tunnel. Okay, great. So that is the edit panel. The inspector view. Now we're back here at the edit panel. Something like that. Yeah, this will definitely be part of the pro subscription. The regular. The regular subway diagram. I made that one free. I feel like that the MTA is moving towards that one. Didn't exactly make sense to charge for it. So I guess it's ultimately a business decision. Like what do you charge for? What's to give away for free? What's an advertisement? What is what is value? I put it all the way at the end there. Nearid Avenue. And it works. If I kinda give it the uh the border treatment though um. I guess bordered button if available. Okay, zoom all the way in. Oh, interesting. Yeah, this is like such a different map. Maybe I should teach an AI to do this. What do you just do yourself and what do you spend time teaching an AI to do? So what if the MTA publishes? Like a completely differently sized map each weekend? Well, I guess at some point they're gonna have to go in rotation. So I feel like yeah, that's nice. Another nice feature about my map editors. I have all the old maps I can just copy in from. Anywhere once I realize what size it is. Oh, which means that the map checker should print the size. Of the map. When it downloads it. Also, I wanna be able to like create new while um have everything highlighted. And what's the method for that? Oh, I have too many parentheses. Now not enough because the IDE is so helpful. I guess that's a little bitter huh? I saw four parentheses. I needed to. I hit delete twice. And then I had zero parentheses. Doesn't feel good. Yeah, this is great. Every time oh I don't have to click. I don't have to click clear highlight anymore. I'm so used to it. Do you want another one? This is like another button. This is one on it. I don't know, that might be. Well, you know, it's not that hard to try. I guess the cost is distractorino. I am tired. I had a great weekend though. I went to the content creator meetup. And that is. Always a good time. I'm like double checking myself on always. If I've have I actually always had fun there? Well, one time was slightly less fun than the others. Nothing bad about it. Just slightly less fun. Every other time I had a really good conversations. I guess it's nice being around other people that are. Making something. Cause you go to. I don't know, wherever you hang out with people and. I don't know, I just I like being around other people that are making stuff. I feel like when I'm creating a new stop, that's when I want to see all the other. So if I go to highlight. And then I go to new stop. I have to remember that I'm looking at Freeman five here. I do like these extra buttons though. And then. What file was this? This was an inspector view. So when the state is. Yes, or also I switch on controller state. Oh, I see. Selecting new needs to be its own. Thing. And then we can just have that. We can have the greatest. Oh, we need all the areas. Where's the uh? Where are the areas coming from? Oh, yeah, I don't want it to come from there. But yeah, I guess you kinda do want it to have it be that. Flexibility case highlight. All. We could do that. We could have both. Cause I don't think I'm using it that way. Compiler, tell me what I need to do next. Areas equals self dot. There we go. Switch must be exhaustive. Oh, we had a build failure. That's weird. Six days is not equal to next week. Huh. Off by one error. I like that. Does that mean I should remove the highlight sum? Guess I can see uh if I'm using it anywhere. Actually, I don't need highlight all. Yeah, I don't need highlight all. Wow, I'm just like trying stuff out and letting it go so easily. I'm so proud of myself. I think it's, at least for me, when I write a piece of code, I... It's like, that's code that I wrote. I want it to be beautiful and live forever. But if it's not the code that I need, then I can, I can delete it. In the same way I was about to delete highlight. The highlight a few? Which I was using as highlight all? Like, I could also just get rid of highlight all, cause... I don't really need it with... Now that... Creating a new stop gives everything all at once. But yes, let's move Freeman stop a little bit that way. So I ordered something from Amazon and it's broken, and I'm annoyed. But not too annoyed. I'll just give it back. I just thought it was gonna be a little bit easier to return it. Oh, that's so nice. There's nothing like your own cooking. Okay, so yeah, let's commit that change. Highlight. All stops when creating a new stop. Yeah, that makes it so much easier. I wonder if it's a daylight savings change, this off by one error. I saw, uh... I think it was a reel, not a TikTok. Where, I mean, it was hilarious for very many reasons, but the part that... The part that was funny s was... The thing is available for employees only, so... So she says, "Okay, I'll do it." Do what? Bec- become an employee. Oh, man. Uh, next time, there's like an employees only bathroom or something? I don't know. I don't wanna give those people a hard time. Um... Just more, uh... Idea of becoming an employee, which will take at least an hour. Uh, to use the bathroom, which, if you're that desperate, you probably need it sooner than that. Eh, that's funny to me. Going for Nigerian concourse. So there's... Oh, right. Cause this is based on the classic map. This numbering system. So I'll keep that as the zero. This will be the one. And this will be also a zero. But on the four line. Great. Hmm, I guess I'll go straight over to the three here. No, that's not right. There we go. Just making sure I have the right stop there. And then 101. I feel myself slowing down. Malcolm. Cool. So that is the three train up here. Let's go the three train down here. Why can't we tap some saving? Like, I can just go straight to new stop here? Park PL. I drank at least sixty-four ounces of water today. I was about to say sixty-four and a half. Uh, I got a new water bottle and it's huge, and it makes it so easy to drink water. Which is nice, cause I'm trying to drink a hundred and twenty-eight ounces of water. I'm slowing down, but I still got juice. Yeah, I kinda wish that... Soon you click on it here, it loads up, but when you're creating a new stop, it isn't yet collecting the... The stops that it's connected to. And that does cause some, uh, confusion for me. That is the, uh... The editor panel, I think? I think I'm getting too tired to do that part. So I will stay on my task, which I can kinda do while half-braineded. Yeah, so here I click three. I guess once I link it up to the stop, it should redraw. So I can see which numbers have been taken already. Or... The highlight view could have the number in it. White. White Street. It's like I want little number buttons for all of them, cause it does make it so much easier. On the bright side of my camera being broken, you can't see me yawning. Because I'm not yawning, I'm just stretching. Okay. Atlantic Avenue. There's certainly room. I think the biggest one was eat. Uh, this one is also Atlantic Avenue Barclays Center. This one is also Atlantic Avenue Barclays Center. I'll have to type it in. So it would be three. And yeah, it's a little... Yeah, what am I doing in here when I move it over that I'm not doing on the other updates? So where's drag? Here it is, unchanged. Oh, it resets the, uh... Map controller state. Oh, it actually looks up the others then. Okay. Okay. Um... Oh, it's only on up here. Does that mean it doesn't... So I may have to make this a binding? Is this a binding? It is a state. Okay, let's make this a... let's make this a binding then. So my base buffer, all that. Okay, I don't think I need that. Show me the error. I feel like I should move the iflet into here. Can I make this a group and then it'll be happy? Well, if I do that, then... I see, that's why I didn't iflet there. Who else? Oh, that's it. Okay, so now... This collapses, which is nice. Let's see, so this was Atlantic... But this one... Didn't update, did it? Oh wait, that's just updating the name, it's not um highlighting the others. What am I doing? That's so clever. Okay, this has to pull out. This is a little silly. Import Swift UI, import underway corlib. Who else? Uh, oh, iOS applib. Okay, fine. Okay, that helps make this file a little bit smaller. Are all doing it... are already doing an on change? Just the idea's there. I know, I think it's too early to try to pull something out. Let's go back down to the unchanged. See if it works. Okay, where were we? We just did Atlantic. So we can go... Bergen? Ohhh, I see. Let's try... Let's have side effects in our functions. Naughty, naughty. Uh, it's generally considered not a good idea. Cuz it makes things harder to figure out later. Well, now they... now they show up. When everything's filled in. Cuz I guess this has to be a map tap area? Cuz this doesn't have others. Yet. Well, it's an improvement. You see the... you see the related dots sooner. Hundred-and-thirty-four. We are not at one-fifteen hour. We're at one-thirty-four an hour. One-thirty-four in an hour fifteen minutes. Oh, I am going slowly. But I'm still going forward. That's the important part. Brooklyn Museum. I'm gonna get all of these done. Cuz yeah, we did... we did stop a little bit to do a little bit of quality-of-life stuff. And that's important to do, cuz that will speed up all the other subsequent times too. Sprinkled that a little bit in. Next thing you know... You have a really great map editing app. Franklin Ave Edger Menders College. Fifteen more minutes. See, like, I know I have... I know I have energy. I know I'm gonna like bounce up as soon as I hit the clock on this. So I'm like, where is that energy for right now? Botanic. I think the interesting thing about TikTok is it just shows that you can be famous doing whatever you want, if you do it good enough. There's a guy who got famous skateboarding while drinking Ocean Spray cranberry juice. And he got a big brand deal from that. There's a guy who dances in the mirror in his shower? Or in his bathroom? And he's very good at that. Beverly Road. And so I am choosing to get famous making a subway app. You gotta make it interesting. Or you gotta put your heart into it. Um, yes, I am. This is what it looks like. Leaving it all on the desk, as it were. Going to my very last possible brain cell for the day. Maybe I needed to eat dinner beforehand? I know, I had a busy day. I couldn't eat dinner before stream. I'm gonna, I think, take my dinner home with me and eat it at home. Wait, can I hit N? Hit Command N? Ah, that's so cool. Command... I guess it Command N though. That needs both hands. Cuz I use a split keyboard for ergonomics. There are no limits, the only limit is your imagination. Do I need to make coding to be more of a performance? Do I have to engage with uh the audience more? As far as I know, no one's talking in chat. I mean, part of what makes these TikTokers so compelling to watch is that they are picking something that has no commercial value outside of being fun to watch on TikTok, like... Dancing in your bathroom mirror has very limited... Or let's put it this way, has not yet fully discovered the potential of it. I guess cause he's doing something new. He's like creating... I don't know, maybe there's been other people that gotten famous for it too. There's a long line of bathroom mirror dancers. I mean, I'm not the first person to make a subway app. I'm probably not even the first person to stream working on their subway app. I'm not the first person to stream coding, that's for sure. I've watched some coding streamers, and I'm like, what are they doing differently than what I'm doing? I guess they seem to have like a larger audience already, so that's very easy for them to the app to interact with chat. I guess that's the other thing, I r- I rarely see them uh coding on coding streams. And I definitely wanna show coding. You think iShowSpeed ever slows down and doesn't show speed? I don't know. I should probably tune into one of his streams. I've only seen like clips. But hey, that's the two train and the three train. I guess up next is the four train. I guess we can take this one backwards. To Bowling Green. The way that they gray it out gives me hope that these are not gonna be changing much. It'll be super easy to update these. Like over lunch uh on Friday when they publish it, and just get it out the door to folks. That is my wish. Why subway apps? Well, all the other subway apps made me angry. I, I had to make my own. To my own taste. It was too much to bear. I really, really, really tried for a whole year to use other people's subway apps. And they, I couldn't. I'm like, I'll just, I'll use this app. I'll do what I need to do in this app. And I couldn't, cause it was so slow. Every time you tapped, something would like refresh from the internet, which was... A terrible experience when you're... Like milliseconds matter when you're rushing in the big city. Like watch a spinner. So some people say be entertaining, other people say be yourself, and that's what's entertaining. What is this? Canal Street? Hmm dumplings. Looks like the five just doesn't stop here on the weekends, is what they're trying to say with this? Like ever? Cause if it did, they would have a great Out5 here. Which, I mean, I don't ride the five all that much, especially on weekends. Not sure the last time I did that was, so this is... This is kind of all new info for me. But what is regular service? I mean, that's the whole point of my app. And I guess Sunny's app has a similar idea of like, regular service doesn't exist. What exists is the present moment. Oops, that was wrong. So did that work? Spring? Zero, one, looks like that worked, okay. Six fifty-seven. We're almost home for the day. Bleecker Street. I've seen my voice exercises today, but I was so tired uh... I couldn't quite hit my notes on the higher end. I guess I've been practicing. I do five minutes of voice exercises every day, along with five minutes of guitar fingering exercises. There's no open mic tonight. Uh, usually go to a Monday night open mic. To perform on the guitar. Six fifty-eight. I was not expecting to get this far. Union Squares. Like, there's no way we get to Union Square before seven. It's not even s- six fifty-nine yet. So... I guess we will, cause here we are. Zero, one, two... Three? See, this is why I need, I need the uh, the associated ones to show up sooner. So that means this one is four? Ooh, we got a crash. Oh, of course. Of course. How much did we lose in that crash? No, not that much. Okay, um, yeah, let's finish the stopout. Amazing. And then let's publish. Thank you so much for hanging out with me, guys. I will see you tomorrow, five o'clock for some more... Further, further going on this. Wow, I cannot talk. Have a great night, everybody. Oh, I need to find someone to raid. Oh, I guess, I guess if I don't have any viewers, a raid doesn't make sense. I missed your stream today, maybe next time. Hey, thanks for stopping by. See you tomorrow, five PM to seven PM. Uh, I can't find the raid thing. Oh, is this the right button? It's showing me studying streams. Okay, well, I'll see-